I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Roth.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Here.
Ms. Cottonburg.
Present.
Mr. Reyes.
Here.
Mr. Maude.
Present.
Mr. Kieselboch.
Yes.
Mr. Yugen.
Here.
And Mr. Alvarez.
Here.
Thank you. This evening's announcements, Mr. Carter has been excused from our meeting this evening. In his place, Mr. Simmons will be voting. And we have three new people to introduce tonight. We have a new alternate member, Mr. Maude. Welcome, sir. This is a fun, a fun organization. Ms. Janet Graham is our new recording secretary. Thank you. We look forward to your expert recording abilities. And Mr. James Stoke, our new city attorney. Welcome, sir. I hope you enjoy our meetings and we will rely on you infinitely.
Absolutely. I'm here to answer any questions or including if you have something coming up and you want to call me at the office. I take phone calls from board members all the time, so please feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Members, you have all had the opportunity to review the meetings from our last meeting, which was December, excuse me, minutes, from our December 7th, 2017 meeting. Does anybody have any additions or corrections?
I have a question. On page two, I'm at the last paragraph, the long, big last paragraph, the fourth line down. I don't know if that word should be commission or if committee is correct. Commission meaning us, committee meaning some other forum that was mentioned in here. Is there any way to confirm or?
I'm trying to read. I'm not sure if it should be commission or council. I'm not sure who I was referring to. But we'll go back to the tape and we'll double check. And if it's commission, we'll certainly change it before we get it to the city clerk or we'll change it to council.
Okay, that would be fine with me.
Any other additions, corrections, or questions? Hearing none. Please, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that they be approved with Plan Staff checking that one word on the second page.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you. We have no quasi judicial hearing today and we have no unfinished business. Is there any public input? Yes, sir? Please, please come.
Is that some new business? Is that what we're doing now? About this Airbnb stuff?
No, sir. This is just for public input. This would be based on something that's not on the agenda, but during the agenda item, the chairman will ask at that point, anybody who would like to get up and speak. So wait till that agenda item.
Okay. New business.
Good evening. It's been a while and it's nice to see everyone again. Dory and I keep going back and forth as to who's leading this commission. So tonight, I guess I'll take over. We are very excited that in the last few months, I know you all know that we went out for requests for qualifications, excuse me, for continuing service contracts with planning and landscape architecture firms in order to address some of the backlog that the city has, has had as far as updating our CRA master plan, our comp plan. We're going to have to update the entire comp plan starting in, well, in 1819. We have a stormwater master plan that we have had in, on the books for a while that needs to be looked at and addressed. We have the recreation and open space element of the comp plan that we've been working on. So we've had a lot of backlog that our department has decided that we needed to get additional assistance with. We are very pleased with the response from the consulting firms. We received eight very qualified responses. Our selection committee met and we all agreed on the top three. The city council has approved the contracts for those top three members. And one of them is here with us this evening. It's RMA and I believe their qualifications, or at least a portion of their qualifications, are within your package this evening. And we have asked them to initiate our first task order, which is to update the CRA master plan. They are here this evening and we'd like to introduce them, give you a moment to speak to them if you'd like. They're very, very well qualified in economic redevelopment and marketing. One of the reasons why we've chosen them for the CRA master plan update. We are still in the process of negotiating the contract that I'm sure will be, will be successful in that endeavor. And one of the reasons why I wanted them to be here this evening is to hear from you all what your thoughts might be on the CRA redevelopment or the riverfront area. I know one of the concerns that this group has brought up on numerous occasions is about the small lots on the east side of Indian River Drive and Riverside Drive, I'm sorry. And it is something that I brought to their attention today and it is something that they will address within the CRA master plan. So with no further ado, these gentlemen do have to get home tonight. I'd like to introduce Mr. Kevin Crowder. He is with Redevelopment Management Associates and he is our, one of our consulting services contracts. Please, Mr. Crowder.
Great, thank you. And with me today is Farrell Tiller, who's one of our economic development coordinators in our office. I'll just tell you a little bit about our firm, a little bit about our approach and what we look for when we come to work with the community. And then really just any initial thoughts and things that as we start getting into our background, and we are, I think that in terms of the contract that Lisa mentioned, we're like right there and should be executed really quickly. But just anything, as we, as we go back and we take in kind of what we looked at today, both Farrell and I are familiar with and have been in Sebastian many times. But what are kind of the themes and just vision and things that you really want to make sure that we're thinking of? And a little bit about our approach. We're a firm based in Pompano Beach. We do work all over the state. We work in urban areas. We work in very rural areas. Where I'm going to be Tuesday, we're working up in Sumter County on some agribusiness type initiatives over in Okeechobee. We do economic development. We have urban designers and architects on our staff in-house. So we have all of the different disciplines internally that we need. And what we're really focused on is economic revitalization. You know, how do you, how do you build or increase wealth within a community? How do you, how do you use that wealth and increase the tax base to improve quality life, quality of life and do it within the context of a community's character, within the authenticity that a community has? Because that's, that's why people want to be there. That's why more people are going to want to come and invest. And the thing that really sort of underpins our approach when we work with the community is there was a, the Knight Foundation did a study around the country about seven or eight years ago and they wanted to understand what connects people to their community. Why do people connect with the places that they live and the places that they love? And they looked at, again, all different types of communities. They looked at big cities. They looked at very small towns. They looked at oceanfront communities, mountain communities, urban, rural, rich and poor. And what they found overwhelmingly and consistently throughout the country was that the three things that most connect people to their place was not jobs, it was not cost of living, it wasn't even schools, even though schools got kind of high. It was the aesthetics of the place. It was how it looks and feels to the people that live there. It was the social offerings, the opportunities for people to engage with their fellow citizens in their community, those gathering places and those opportunities. And then it was how open and welcoming that community is. And it's a very broad perspective that means open and welcoming from, you know, new arrivals, tourists that come in, new businesses. There's anything you can think of in there. And we think about that a lot and our firm is even almost organized sort of in that direction. And so when we're looking at economic development, at business attraction, at helping local businesses expand, we're taking a very realistic approach. We take, we have a very good balance in the firm of understanding public and private sector perspectives and getting those perspectives to come together to implement a community's vision. And then we focus also on making sure that we're going to come back and give you a master plan and a plan that's implementable. We're going to look at resources. We're going to look at measures. We're going to make sure that, that you're going to be able to implement this plan and see the results of it. You know, you can, you can sometimes come up with 100 or 150 great sounding initiatives that maybe 99% of people will buy into and support, but if you don't have the resources to implement those, you're just going to lose credibility and not get there. And so we're really focused on the implementation aspect also and maintaining the authenticity and character of a community. So it's a little bit about us. I'll just kind of open it up if you have any questions for us, if you have any thoughts. Farrell's going to capture all of those and we look forward to being back here soon to spend some more time with you.
Thank you very much. I did read your brochure and I was quite impressed with the ideas that are expressed here. In particular, the idea of being able to put new function to old places and still maintain the, the community atmosphere. One of the things that I've always said is I like to think about what would I do if there weren't any rules in place? And I kind of got that that might be something that you folks look at as well. I'm very pleased. I know you can help us and I know that when two parties both want the same end result, the negotiation will be successful. Welcome.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from the others, please?
Go.
I, I have a question of the staff. I'm trying to, to understand. I know we're looking at the, the LPA and the CRA. What part of any of those projects is RMA going to be helping out with? The long range planning and the community reinvestment? I'm just curious because I know that we've got a seven year horizon on, I believe it's the LPA. And I don't know if they're, are they going to be working on that or is this just totally a support function with projects delegated as they come up?
If, if we're talking about the CRA master plan, correct? So just the CRA area of the city? And that's the riverfront, correct? And so when you're saying the LPA, you're, you act as the local planning agency, correct, for the long range planning aspect of that CRA master plan? But if you're talking about the, the long-term vision, we were just talking about that today. The CRA is slated to sunset and I believe 15 years unless we want to extend it at that time or even any time before then. But we will be looking at the sunset goals, if you will, of the CRA. We have 15 years to achieve some of the goals that we had set out back in 2003 and back in 2010. You know, what are those goals? Have we achieved them? Are they still applicable today? And, or do we need to come up with other goals? Again, that's the sunset that we're looking at. We will have the opportunity to extend our CRA again if we'd like to. But, but for now, in this contract, that's what, how we're going to be proceeding. Does that answer your question, Mr. Roth?
I, I think so. I just wanted to make sure. I know we've got those other projects that are in the background that need to be worked on and I didn't know if they were going to be helping with that or if it was something totally.
We do have other projects that I'm sure RMA will be assisting us with in the future. But right now, this has been, the, the CRA master plan update is in our CIP for this year, so we're anxious to get going on it.
That's the big answer, yes.
I would just like to add to that, to some of the projects that we have talked about, updating the landscape plan, the lots on the east side. We had kind of said, let's step back, that we don't want to do that yet until we have an updated master plan in place. And then once that master plan's in place, from that vision, then we can in turn maybe adjust or amend our land development codes to help accomplish that. So this is the first step to kind of finish up some of those projects that we have talked about during the last year.
Right. And one of, one of the things that this process will do is it will, it will let us go back and look at those projects and, and look at them also within the context of the comprehensive plan and the land development regulations. One of the things that as we get to the end of the master plan process in doing the CRA plan, one of the requirements of state law is, is a finding that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and that will come back to you as the LPA. One of the things that, that we may do is exactly that, is give you the idea on, okay, here are certain things and certain amendments you need to consider to accomplish some of the projects or initiatives that you've identified in here. And that'll be part of, part of this process.
Okay. Question, you, in your brochure, you mentioned an architectural design manual and we've loosely thrown about the phrase old fishing village concept and we like to see that happen, but staff has been extremely limited, haven't had a chance to really get into it. Is that something that is part of this, this whole idea is to put something like that together that's an enforceable guideline that can be handed out to developers as they come in when you're designing a building? Then here, here's a guideline to follow so that if you can incorporate these items into the design to have it workable, to turn the, turn it around so that we start seeing something that's, you know, really along the line what we wanted.
Right. So where we look at the design guidelines within this process, and yes, we do, we do develop the design guidelines themselves and the code language and all of that for communities. In the context of a CRA master plan, what we do is we give the design guidance that we feel is appropriate for an area, that gives the guidance to the city to then go through the process of actual adoption. So what we'll develop will, is not the enforceable design guidelines, but it will be the conceptual guidelines that support the goals of the CRA plan. And then we'll go to the city's process that they'll need to go through to make sure that they're consistent not only with CRA plan, but with, with a lot of other elements of your LDRs and your efforts here.
Okay. I don't want to have a lot of councilmen coming after me saying I'm spending city money when I really don't even know that that, those manuals are part of this plan, but I'm just bringing it up to ask because it's something we really wanted.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
Mr. Roth.
I want to thank you.
I will.
Okay.
Sorry.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. You want to go ahead or? All right. Yeah, for Dory also and Lori for doing this. As a matter of fact, because I was out of town this week and up in Pensacola. And they have a nice little concept there. And actually I filmed a little bit of what, you know, could be, because here really, if we really think about it, we don't have a downtown. It's just like straight right through and, you know, like it went by. And so, yeah, and maybe something to, but that's good. That's good. I'm glad that we're moving forward on this.
I know exactly where you're talking about. Our urban design director and I were in Pensacola maybe four months ago with cameras going crazy around that downtown.
So, yeah, they're doing something really nice. And I thought about that, saying, wow, we can bring that here because they do have water. They do have, you know, they're, they're the coast too. So that's something that, but thank you. Okay.
I was going through some of the list of many of the projects you've done. I'm very familiar with these cities. And I was wondering, what are some of the most recent ones you, you've worked on and have the cities adopted or some of your past ones? Did they adopt your plan and did, did it follow through and work out?
Sure. One, talking about urban, or design standards, the Village of Miami Shores has a little like six block, you know, one and two story downtown. They adopted the design standards that we produced for them last Tuesday and are going through implementation. But one of the other elements that came from that plan was not just the design standards, it was the water and sewer infrastructure that's needed to be able, for a restaurant to be able to even open in that downtown. And that infrastructure's just been finished. They've done some of the ordinance changes that make it easier for some of those businesses to come in. And then the design standards kind of wrap all of that together. So that's one example. If you're familiar with Broward County and the town of Davie, with their western theme, you know, it's cowboy town. That's, that's their brand. And so they have the Bergeron Rodeo Arena and then they've got some other property and it's all disconnected from what should be their downtown, which is Davie Road, if you're familiar, and Orange Drive. And so they hired us to figure out what they could do with those 24 acres of real estate to, to give Davie a real downtown, which doesn't really exist. And so we came in, we did the market analysis, we did the real feasibility analysis on what would it take for a private sector partner to come in and make an investment here? And the town council, we, we took them all the way through a selection process with an RFP. In November, the town council made a selection of a developer that's done, that's very experienced in Davie, understands the western theme, understands the scale and character that's needed. And we've just started the negotiations with them to do this 24 acre western village, basically. That will give them a downtown, connect the, the town hall with the rodeo arena with the western village and then connect that to the residential uses that are surrounding that, just, just as another example.
I'm very familiar with those areas. As a matter of fact, I'm, I'm working on projects in the Nova area.
Right.
So another question is you mentioned stormwater and sewer. And you mentioned they may be helping us update our stormwater master plan. What is your experience there?
So the experience in stormwaters is, comes from our urban design and planning department who primarily their, their role is focused on traditionally in code writing, urban design and that development. But the way that we're organized and if I can just kind of walk you through how we get there is we have really the three elements that you need for a project to be successful is you need market feasibility, you need regulatory efficiency, and that's our urban designers and our planners, and then you have brand and identity. And that's for your CRA plan to be successful, that's for a project to be successful, that's even for something like Uber to be successful. They need all of those things. So when we, when we do that, we're coming in and working with our urban designers and our planners and then they're digging and looking at the code requirements. They're looking at the regulatory structure. And then from there, they're going in to identify the specifics of the infrastructure needs, the capital requirements that are going to be needed for that, even to the point of what's the disruption and the phasing that needs to come in and do these to support those types of investments. And so we do that a lot through our CRA work, especially in the CRAs where we serve as a manager of a CRA. We're overseeing all of those engineers as well that, that come in. So the experience on that is pretty significant and is an integrated part of our overall approach because we're looking at all three of, all of those different areas. We're not looking at just economic development or just planning. We're looking at all those pieces that need to come together to make it work.
Right. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Very exciting.
No other comments?
One last question. I'm sorry to be coming up with all these ideas and questions, but I think Plan Staff knows that I'm very interested in this developing Indian River Boulevard with trying to make it more walker friendly and give people a reason to be there. We've got a couple of isolated little areas and trying to connect it up with some more small pockets like that. Have you any experience in anything like that that you could bring to our situation here?
Absolutely. We have a lot of experience in that. It's one of, we think that those types of trails and connections are some of the most important elements of a community's fabric and making those connections. You've got some great ones already here.
That's true.
And extending those becomes even more important. We spend a lot of time, and, and the trail connections, both locally and throughout the state, were one of the, the top three key elements. We just finished last year the economic development plan for the city of Tallahassee. And you may not know, but the, the coast to coast trail that starts over on the west coast of Florida comes across and ends at, and its welcome center is in downtown Tallahassee. And we spent a lot of time on, okay, how do we make that connection into trails all the way through, or not Tallahassee, Titusville, I'm sorry, all the way through Titusville out to the Wildlife Refuge, out to the Cape, out to all of those different things. In South Florida, we spend a lot of time on this and, and in working on the Atlantic Greenway, which eventually is envisioned to connect all the way from Key West even all the way up to Maine. South Florida has made a lot of those connections, but that's, that's one of the core elements we look at. And it's become more and more an important element of economic development, not just quality of life.
Something like that will help with our trying to centralize and come up with a business type area if we can focus more foot traffic in that area and get people a more reason to go there. Goodness knows we've got parking in the right spots to really facilitate, you know, the basic of that. So that's, that's great.
And we see trails as having all three of those core elements that we talked about. They bring great, awesome aesthetics to an area. They create a gathering place for your community to meet up with each other and just even the openness element. I mean, they really do sort of just, just tie that community fabric together.
One thing I remember, it might've been 2011 when they did a similar presentation. We spoke about not only greenways, but blueways, the waterways.
Absolutely.
I'd love to see a water taxi take me across to the park, you know, on the other side or other areas. So keep that in mind.
I've had experience trying to figure out how to make water taxis feasible.
Yeah, go ahead. Bring the truck.
We don't have a lot of places to go, but that's one place I'd take you around. I have to do it on my own boat all the time. Anyhow, thank you.
You got a lot of ingredients here that we're throwing into it. Lot to work with.
Thank you. I'm sure we are all looking forward to your assistance and we sorely need it.
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Likewise. Thank you and we're looking forward to being, being back soon.
Thanks.
Thank you. Enjoy your drive back home. Don't do things small.
Okay. Our next item is a report regarding the participation in the American Planning Association Florida chapter.
Thank you. As the past chair, actually, of the Atlantic Coast section of the Florida American Planning Association, I've always been lucky enough to attend their annual legislative policy, public policy workshop in Tallahassee. This year I went again. It was very, it's always very informative. They talk about the economics of the state. They have different speakers, obviously, through the day and they talk about other important legislation. Medical marijuana was again, one of the top topics of the, of the public policy workshop. Vacation rentals, not so much, which was surprising. But one of the things that they also do is they generally have a nice mobile tour as an educational aspect of the whole two days. And so I was able to go on a mobile tour of tiny homes, tiny houses. And this was something that this commission had expressed a lot of interest in, possibly for the small lots located in the Riverside CRA. It was an interesting combination of ti, just, not just tiny lots or tiny homes on separate lots, but it's actually a community, the first built community up in Tallahassee. I have a PowerPoint if we want to queue that up and I can show that to you with your permission?
Please.
Gary? He usually does it right up in here. Yes? No? Well, what was interesting about this development, which surprised me and I didn't know, is actually run by a nonprofit and it's part of their method of helping homeless individuals or at-risk individuals get back on their feet. So this community, does he have it? Oh, I'm sorry. Do I need to come up there and do that? Oh, okay. I apologize. I'll be right back. See what this does. Can you hear me now? So anyways, it's the, it's called The Dwellings. And again, it's, it's run by a nonprofit, which helps to, to develop a comprehensive approach to the causes of homelessness and work to provide growth and stability for its clients. It was surprising to us who arrived on the tour only because we didn't expect that and it was a pleasant surprise. So they have about 30 acres and at, at the time of build out, now they only have maybe 11 houses that I believe, but at the time of build out, they plan on having 130 homes and a community center and a store and a restaurant and everything that would be a sustainable community. They are, they have solar and wind power and smart technology. The home sizes are small and what's interesting is that, I mean, they're beautiful and beautifully done and they're all And they're all self-contained. So when you look at the size compared to the rental request for these homes, you might go, what, 220 square feet and I'm going to pay 550 a month? However, they're all, it's all included. Water, electricity, smart technology, so your Wi-Fi, your cable, your furniture, your social services on site, so it's all combined in that rent. Again, the community is just really nicely laid out. They do have, several of the homes are ADA compliant with ramps and all. The floor plans, again, are just simple. You know, they have their small, medium, and large. The large is interesting because this is some of the interior shots. It was difficult to get interior shots. That's one of the separate bedrooms. But the large tiny house has a second floor, and it's called the loft, and you actually have to climb a ladder. So before an individual can move in there, they have to make sure they can get up and down this ladder. I could move in, I got up and down the ladder. But they are very small, very compact, very beautifully done. And that in the background is the being-built community center and some bike racks. We thought that it would be interesting for you all to at least hear this presentation today. It was an interesting tour. Again, it's more of a community, and it may not be what this commission was reaching for when you talked about tiny homes, but it may be something we want to consider as an alternative housing element for the city, either affordable or just alternative for individuals on small lots. And that's about all I have, but of course I'll take questions.
I like the idea because it does what we've seen here right in front of us. That's, it's great because it brings it all together, and it's controlled as far as the houses beside each other, setbacks that are lining up, color scheme, and it looks extremely nice.
It was beautiful. It's a really beautiful development.
And it looked to me like they were walking paths to the houses so you don't have vehicles up and down the streets in front of them, which is good. So parking is elsewhere. And maybe someone may not even have the wherewithal to have a vehicle. So it puts things a lot closer, you know, to them as far as being able to use things. It looked very nice.
I have a question. This community, what you just showed, is it partially or all private-funded, combination?
Yes, it is a nonprofit, and they mentioned a gentleman, and I believe he's on, I gave you the website there. You could look it up. I cannot recall his name, but I think he is the major benefactor. But it is private. It is, they may get some public assistance, you know, I would assume they do, but I mean, it's almost a system they have. They have a whole, like, food bank in a different area. And then, you know, so this is like their third step in getting these individuals off the street and getting them assistance and the help that they need.
Okay.
What tract of land is this on? How big of a, how many acres?
It's 30 acres.
30 acres.
Yes, and it's kind of outside of the city.
I was going to say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think, my opinion, waterfront, that, it's not gonna...
Oh, I don't picture it on the waterfront. But I do feel real, and I know there are some tracts of land that this would be appropriate for. And I'm not, whether it's, whether it's an organization or not, I don't even see it that way. I see it as a viable option for first-time homeowners, people who might be older but, and can no longer maintain a large property but still want that autonomy of not living in an apartment building. They're not quite ready for assisted care yet. I think we're, and the affordability of it, and whether it's single families or an organization, I can certainly see the value of a place where all these other amenities might be really important too, particularly with the social things that, I think it could really be, it's looking forward into who we are becoming as a society. And as I mentioned once before, my first home was 514 square feet. It was very, very functional. Two bedrooms, kitchen, living room. My husband and I lived there with two little children until we all got too big for it. But that was our pathway to be able to afford the next home and the next home and the next home. Without that, I have no idea where we'd be today. But I know that it was important in the development of our family. And I think that we're missing some of that here. I know we're missing affordable housing in this city.
As Lisa was speaking, I was trying to figure out if we would need to, if this could come into our city already with our current codes, or would we have to change anything in our land development code? And I got to thinking that our PUDR zoning district would allow for it. But most of our PUDs that have come in have had a density of 3.7 homes per acre. And our low-density residential is five units per acre, which is the Highlands, which quarter lots, and smaller houses like this might not still want quarter lots. But we do have that medium density. So if somebody was to come in, they may just have to change their land use to the medium density or depending if they annex in or if it's something that's existing. But I believe our PUDR zoning district would already accommodate something like this if somebody came in, and whether they were leased lots or deed, you know, where you could actually buy your lot, a subdivision. I don't think that we would have to change anything in our code to accommodate a subdivision like this. I've had calls where people have come in and say, I have got this lot in the Highlands and I'd like to put a tiny house there. That they can't do because there are minimum sizes on the houses that they have to put. But I think our code already accommodates a subdivision like this if a developer was to come in.
A subdivision.
Yeah, that was my thought, too. I can think of at least two places.
Yeah, that'd be something more logical than actually, you know, put a little... What is the minimum square footage? I think it's 1,500, 1,200?
In the Highlands, it's 1,200 square feet, plus you have to have a one-car garage. So it's 1,400 square feet.
But is this something that could be considered in some of the small lots along the river?
Everybody said no waterfront, but I would definitely do something like that.
I don't know about that.
They won't block the view.
Pull up my boat to the backyard and... Like a little fish house. We have one out there already that looks just like those. It's a little rundown, but Archie's, I think, fish house looks almost identical to those. At least at one point it was. I don't see an issue. And those are small lots.
And I hadn't, as I said, I hadn't pictured it that way, but I think if you're talking fishing village, you know, it could probably work.
That would require some land development code amendments because the zoning districts...
Yeah, we had to eliminate the parking requirement.
That's correct.
They refer to the RM8, which does have minimum sizes for the house. So that would require some land development code amendment.
Thank you so much.
Sure. It was my pleasure.
I'm going to go to the site and take a look and see if I can get more information on... Yeah, it's exciting.
I'll be back in a few minutes.
Okay.
If it's okay with the, can I ask the members of the public to bring up what they might like now? Or is it? Okay. We'd like your input, sir.
Yes, my name is Mike Stern.
Wait till you get here, and you have to give your name and your address so that...
My name's Mike Stern, 966 Streamlet Avenue.
Thank you.
And the house next to me was recently purchased by a couple from Texas, and they've turned it into a hotel. They're doing two-day vacation rentals. I mean, very short-term. The turnover is, you know, it's too many people in the neighborhood, too many cars, too much traffic. I mean, in the old days, you couldn't run a small business out of your house. Now you can turn the house into a small business itself. I just don't see it. I mean, they have a property manager. This is a commercial venture.
Can I ask you a question? Have there been issues with noise or maintenance?
Parking, they've had cars parked all down the street, had a party.
Please, please make sure that if there are issues like that, you file a complaint with the police department? Because at this point in time, that's your alternative. Nobody's allowed to do anything that destroys the quality of the life of their neighbors.
Okay, but are, I mean, are we addressing this issue as a planning? What's it doing to my property values?
We're discussing it, however. The state of Florida has said that if we didn't have anything on the books previously, we can't put anything on the books now.
Who is the state of Florida to tell us that?
Their god.
We're working on, we're working on implementing some regulations there.
Is there a timeframe for any of this?
We're working on it, sir.
How do I live with this?
I have one across the street from me, sir.
Can we have our, I'm sorry, sir?
Well, now you know what I'm talking about.
Exactly what you're saying.
I'm sorry, I believe we thought that you wanted to speak on tiny houses. You're going to, you need to stick around and wait for my presentation on vacation rentals.
Oh, okay.
I am going to be making a presentation on this very issue in about five minutes. If you wouldn't mind waiting, and perhaps we can answer some of your questions. Thank you so very much.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Oh, good.
Please identify yourself.
Richard Rosen, 965 Streamlet Avenue, here in Sebastian. I've been involved with a Facebook group that isn't directly tiny houses, but they live in travel vans and other equivalents. And in many cases, they know, they're at an age and they haven't saved enough money to actually own a house. And so I've become familiar with the tiny houses in that regard, from that perspective. And you had mentioned it also for seniors, as well as people just starting out in life to finally be able to afford something. So when I heard about this, I just got very excited. And I thought it's a wonderful diversification of the housing stock for Sebastian. So I just want to give that input since I have opportunity as an ordinary resident here, that it feels very, very good to me.
Thank you, sir. And you're anything but ordinary. Okay. Commission matters. Anybody? Nobody?
The sign is gone, that's good over there.
I just want to make a comment, the old thought I keep bringing up, and that is all-aboard Florida going through our community at super-fast speeds. And I know that all of the cities along the route don't have the money to put in to safely improve the railroad crossings and don't want to do it. Read another article last week about the south of us, and there's a lot of problems, but everyone's afraid to spend any money right now, the city money, and I can understand that, just simply because they're working, trying to get all-aboard Florida to pay for it. And they've got some high-priced attorneys, so I don't know how it's going to work out. But I sure hope we, as residents around those tracts, don't end up suffering with the trains coming through. I certainly hope that they can put a hiatus on it somehow or other. Not looking good, but anyway.
We do have one issue that is a commission's matter, and that is we are obligated to hold an election this evening. So I will entertain...
I have a question.
...motions? Yes, sir?
Can I, there's some other commission matters, maybe?
Okay.
I did want to bring up a question. There is some work being done at the East Street Lake Park there, and I was curious as to what it is that they're doing there. I spent a couple of days there with a big hole in the, from the...
Philip Patton at our stormwater had just filled me in, and the other day there was an artesian well there that's been there, and the pipe has cracked. And it has been seeping into the ground, but they have caught it. They had to find the pipe. There was a little bit of digging, and they're having to cap that. But it had to do with some well and some piping, is what I remember, what he told me.
That's what I thought it was. We've had issues there with all the fish and turtles dying, but it was high salinity in the lake. So they did catch it before it leaked into this lake.
It has been leaking, but they have caught it.
There's a lot of birds in there and...
Yes, they caught it, but it was, it's not the, it's not tied to the water fountain. I wasn't sure if it, the well and that was connected to the, but that's a...
Fountain just runs off of the lake water.
Correct. So anyways, but it was a nearby artesian well that had had some pipe. It was used in the past for something, but the pipe has cracked and they did catch it. And they're not replacing it, it's just going to be capped and filled.
Also, the pothole that they came and filled almost a year ago lasted almost a year, but it is exposed again right at the turn there on, I guess, this Oak and Lake. They filled it with some asphalt shavings, and it worked out really good last time. So it lasted a long time. Thank you. Thank you.
Was there another matter, sir?
Got a question, Bill?
Oh, as regard the election, yeah, I do have a question.
Okay.
Not that I'm all that interested in it, but am I eligible?
Got two years.
No, I got more than that.
Question for the attorney I was supposed to give to you this week, but are alternate members eligible to be chair?
I was on the board from Old Ford to...
No, I'm sorry, only the regular members. Because alternate member wouldn't be at every meeting necessarily.
Thank you.
What was the answer?
The answer is no. Only regular members can hold the post of chair or vice chair.
Or does it say that?
Well, the problem is, as an alternate member, you only serve if needed. So if you were chair, I mean, they may not need alternate members at the next meeting, then we wouldn't have a chair. And if you had alternate members as a chair and a vice chair, then we'd have nobody to run the meeting. So the members of the board of the commission sit as chair and vice chair.
Okay, the reason I ask is because I'd been on the board from 2004 to 2011. I mean, I just asked because it said you had to have been a regular member for two years and so forth. So just ask. I'm an alternate now because I'm back on the board, but...
Just be a current.
Right. Current.
You have to be one of the current regular members.
All right, thank you. Could we have some nominations, please, for chair and then vice chair?
I'm going to go out and say, since we had very minimal meetings this last year, I'd like to just re-nominate you as chairperson. You had very little meetings to actually chair. So if we can do that, actually, we can do that. I know I can do that. So I am nominating Ms. Kottenberg as chairperson.
A second.
Thank you, and I will accept the nomination. Are there other nominations?
I would like to nominate Joel for vice chair. It's possible. I mean, I don't know, I mean... Okay. Unless David wants to keep it, I mean...
Are there any other nominations for the chair, position of chairperson? Okay, then I guess it's unanimous. Thank you. No nominations for vice chair, please?
David, are you going to, you want to continue?
I'm good. If I get nominated, I will accept it, but I think Mr. Roth is a great candidate. He also did not get much time at his last appointment as chairperson, so... I also will nominate Mr. Roth, so now I'm outnumbered.
That was an easy cop-out.
I believe my term's expiring, June of this year?
Yeah, June, yeah.
Mr. Ray, yes, you, yes, this June of this year, but of course, the city clerk will, you're eligible for another term, and the city clerk will contact you.
Oh, okay.
Would you second his nomination?
Yes, I would.
Okay. We have a nomination, and a second. Any other nominations for vice chair? Hearing none, we will assume that you are nominated and elected.
Ooh, congratulations.
Thank you.
Unanimous, huh?
Unanimous.
Regards to Mr. Ray as bringing up his position expiring. If you remember after Chairman Paul left, because it was, the code did previously say that you were two full terms. But after that, and we had lost a good chairman, the city council did change that code. So there is no term limits for the Planning and Zoning Commission. So you can serve as long as you would like to.
Oh, is that right?
And reappointed by city council.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're not under pressure.
You're not under pressure, thank you. City attorneys matters?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Staff matters, and now our update on short-term rental, vacation rentals.
Yes.
Good evening.
Again.
This, again, I have a PowerPoint for everyone, only because I felt that the information I would be sharing is familiar to you, and some of the packets are fairly lengthy. So if you'd like any copies of the information that I'm going to submit to you tonight, please call our office, and we'll be happy to get that to you. Back in November of 2017, if you recall, we provided you with a short-term vacation rental brief. I wanted to just bullet that brief for you this evening, just to jog your memories on what we talked about. In 93, I do have a pointer, right? In 1993, the legislation preempted all regulation of public lodging and public food service establishments to the state. In 2011, the legislation stepped in once again and prohibited cities from regulating short-term vacation rentals. At that time, most cities, or prior, no, prior to that time, most cities had gone in and started zoning certain areas to put their short-term rentals in, such as in tourist or in commercial zones. Unfortunately, many cities did not, or local governments, and Sebastian is one of those. And if you recall, a short-term vacation rental is defined as a property that is rented more than three times a year for less than 30 days at a time. So this is not covering that annual rental, or somebody who might do it for three months or six months at a time. So what is also very important that I want this commission to realize is that the legislation is talking about any residential unit. So any, it's a single-family home. Any residential unit is eligible to be used as a transient public lodging establishment, and hence a vacation rental. So it's not necessarily just a commercial building in a commercial area. I want that to be clear. In 2014, the legislation stepped in again, and they are now, they started prohibiting vacation rentals, or regulate the duration or frequency of vacation rentals in a local government area, so hence zoning. We couldn't, we could no longer say where these areas could be in the city, right? But the law currently allows local governments to adopt ordinances specific to these rentals and life safety issues, and this is something this commission brought up previously. And what we stated was that we would get with our building official, Wayne Esteline, I'm sorry, and have him look at the building codes and the fire codes in relation to short-term rentals, and we have done that. I summarized Wayne's information into this slide, which shows that a single-family residence occupancy has a type of R3, okay? That's according to the building code. But in that R3 occupancy, it allows boarding houses, which is transient rentals, right? So a single-family residence can also be a transient rental with 10 or fewer persons. The Indian River County Health Department allows two persons per bedroom plus two for anybody on sewer or septic. This was another issue that I know this commission was concerned about. So for instance, in a three-bedroom home, you can have eight individuals on a continual basis, I guess. In the Florida Fire Prevention Code, it also defines one- and two-family dwellings, and it defines lodging and rooming houses. Rental units, where not occupied by a single family, would be falling under lodging and rooming houses. And then we get into the smoke alarm, and the carbon monoxide, and the fire lighting, those type of life safety issues, which really are not any more onerous than a single-family home would probably put in anyway. I mean, Wayne and I talked about, for instance, the path of Egress shall be clearly visible. So IRC fire is required, is requiring a hard-wired emergency lighting at the main entrance. Now, that doesn't necessarily have to be a big exit sign, like you see in commercial buildings, but it could just be, you know, one of those orange nightlights, things of that nature. So we followed through with that.
Excuse me, a question.
Sir, of course.
Is this, were you just, yourself, you just did this, or is this part of...
We had talked about that we would follow up with our building official.
Okay, so that's what you kind of...
That's correct. So he gave me a report, I summarized it.
Okay, perfect, okay, okay.
But you can, you are...
No, 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 that's fine, I just want to follow you, okay.
Okay. I hope I summarized it well enough. What we also did, at the request of this commission, is to look at what other local governments are doing. And what we found was that Indian River County really had the most comprehensive action, really, in our area. For instance, I reached out to another local government, similar size, Indian River Beach up in Brevard County. They were proposing an ordinance just recently that was covering all of these issues that we were all talking about, and they're on second reading, but they're putting that on hold now until the session ends. But with Indian River County, they have created a vacation rental license. And that license, the application, is $250, and it's good for three years. In that application, they require that you prove that you are registered with the state, you have a local business tax receipt, you're paying your business taxes, that you register with the clerk of court for the tourist development tax dollars, the bed tax dollars, that you have completed a site inspection checklist. And in that checklist is the life safety items that we all just talked about. That you name a rental unit manager, or contact information, just in case things go south. There's someone that we, the city, can call, or someone can call. They have also taken the step to create specific codes and ordinances relating to vacation rental special parking regulations, commercial events that are prohibited at residents, such as big wedding parties, and those type of events that disrupt a regular neighborhood. They have looked at their noise regulations, and they include all of this in the package. They also provide a state guide to vacation rentals, which is also out there. They state in the application that complaints about vacation rental violations can remain anonymous, which is important to a lot of people, and that's covered with the code enforcement office, and then, of course, public disturbance nuisance through the sheriff's office. Now, the county has taken the step, and so has a lot of other local governments, to hire a software company called Host Compliance. And I spoke with the county just a couple of days ago, and they were rave reviews. For about $10,000 a year, this software company, you know, looks at all the websites, all the rental, vacation rental websites, which I, there's numerous ones, and then they utilize their software to determine where that address is. Because if you're familiar with BRBO and Airbnb, they don't necessarily tell you the address that you're going to rent until you rent it. So they have a software that helps them hone into that. Since they have started this, when they started it, there was about 350 rentals on the website. Once they started their vacation rental license, it has been reduced to about 80 to 90 on the website. We're talking Indian River County, the unincorporated area of Indian River County, and currently 60 are licensed in the county. And there's been a marked reduction in code enforcement complaints. So it's all very favorable. And, you know, they're, they have really gone above and beyond, and really, you know, dotted their i's and crossed their t's for this regulation. I looked at also the city of Sebastian current codes, and even though we have noise in parking, residential parking, excuse me, codes, we certainly would have to work on those to elaborate and embellish them, and to include vacation rentals. However, and here's the big sticky wicket, that we are in session right now, and there is a Senate bill, 1400, that is now gone to appropriations, and it looks like it has legs. And it's being opposed by the League of Cities. And it specifically is being opposed because it is taking away, once again, our local government's ability to possibly even regulate the life safety requirements that we would like to at least be able to regulate. So it's being strongly opposed, obviously, by League of Cities. It's even preempting licensing and regulation, and bringing it up to the state level. The bill removes any right and duty of local governments to do building and life safety code inspection as a result of the preemption, and removing vacation rentals from the definition of public lodging establishments. It also, because it states that local governments may only regulate uniformly with all, excuse me, with all other residents, it's going to, like, for instance, Indian River County has their regulations that specifically say vacation rental parking requirements. That would be null and void. It would have to be for all residential areas, not just for vacation rentals. So what we're recommending is, once again, we'll move forward in any way this commission would like us to move forward. However, until session ends and we understand what is going to be passed, there may not be much movement that we can do at this point, and I would obviously ask the attorney to step in and give his opinion on that.
I mean, she's right. It's something that the League of Cities is monitoring, something that local government attorneys and managers are monitoring. There has been, over the last several years, some would argue longer, but there's been a real attack on home rule power for local governments to control things, as we all saw with the medical marijuana, where we were told completely hands-off. That's happening in a lot of, a lot of other areas, too, and this is just something that we, the League of Cities is vigilant on, and we keep informed on, and we'll keep you updated as time goes on, so...
Any questions? I know it's not really great news.
Could we get a hard copy?
Of course you may, yes. I'll make sure that we email everyone out then.
As a commission member, would I be stepping out of line if I sent a letter to my representative to say I'm... Okay.
Not at all. As citizens, you have every single right to contact your representative and let them know how you feel about this.
I would sign my letter that way.
I would encourage anyone to do that.
I have a...
If you can send, can you send that PowerPoint via email?
I was going to let you know tomorrow morning, I'll send both the PowerPoints on the tiny houses and this one to you, the documents.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I gave, excuse me, Dory, the other day, something from the Florida Realtors that we get. I don't know if you got a copy?
Yes.
Yes, and it's also addressing that company you just mentioned.
Post, yes.
Yes, yeah. Because you think we're bad, Terrifield Bead and all these people, they got, their city has 350. I mean, it's ridiculous. And so hopefully, I know it's, we have our hands tied, but we're going to jiggle and get it untied somehow.
Well, if we're able to move forward...
We have to nip this somehow, because what this gentleman said is true. We're not allowed to have businesses in our houses, but then again, you turn around and you can have a, you know, a hotel, a motel there, you know? That's totally, totally unacceptable, but we're working on it.
I wish I had better news for you.
No, I know, I know.
But after March 9, when the session ends, perhaps we can regroup and see where we can head with this, you know, March, April.
Some of us Realtors, I didn't have the opportunity to go this year, but they went up to Tallahassee, and there's a big thing about it, you know, pro and con, you know? So that's why it's still being worked on, you know? So, but I think the hotel, hotel business are starting to get involved, and you know, that's big money. And when big money is involved in the attorneys, then things will happen. You know, up to now, since they're, you know, well, once they start hurting their pockets, you know?
Yes, because they're not collecting bar checks, yep.
And so eventually, it's going to happen.
Oftentimes, changes are like pushing a chain uphill. It's not an easy job. And as bad as it may be on some of the days that you have uninvited guests in your neighborhood, some people get to have them there a year at a time, like my neighbor.
Well, it's like everything, you know, a lot of people have pros and cons, and everybody that I spoke to that hasn't had a situation negative, everything is beautiful and all that, but you see it right there, this gentleman just showed up, and I've had it for the last three months. And once you got one in front of your house, it is totally different. It is totally different.
And if I may, in speaking with the county, I encourage all of you to at least get it on the books with our code enforcement or sheriff.
No, I called them the other day at 6:45 in the morning.
Because, because the more data we have on our books of these code enforcement or, you know, nuisance violations, then the stronger we are when we get to our representatives and say, we need...
They showed up the last, the last event, very quickly. They showed up around 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock in the morning, two pickup trucks with two boats. At 6:30 in the morning, I look outside, the front garage door is open, this gentleman, he's banging on the trailer. At 6:45 in the morning, wow, good thing I have my code enforcement caller ID. At 7:03, he was there. Oh, no, I mean, that's what we pay him for. And so...
I agree.
I'll give you that number later.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other staff?
No, but I don't know if any of the public still had any, if they did want to respond to this item, or if we answered all their questions?
Yes, sir?
Well, since I'm talking to the choir here, Richard Rosen, 965 Streamlet Avenue. I'll be brief. Mike said most of the same idea. And also, living across the street, I never would have understood the gravity of it. Now, I want to say, the property manager handling this is probably one of the best. My wife and I had our own property management business in Connecticut, so we know the business. He's excellent. However, and he told me, if anything is out of order, let him know, he'll get right over there. And it's true. But it's only since been mid-December, so it wasn't, I think, two or three weeks. There was, I found out he only rented it to maybe two or four people. And the next thing I knew, there were 12 or 14 people in the house, and six or seven cars, all along the swale of not just that house, but also, I think, your house, too, Mike. And so at that point, I was just kind of waiting to see what was going to happen. And they were just here for a long weekend, for the Sebastian high dive. They were young people, and they just didn't have that sense of responsibility. And I'm just putting this in just for the record, so you have some direct input. And then a couple of days ago, it had been every three, four, or five days, it seems somebody's new, somebody was pointing on the right-of-way of the street. You know, for most cities, where you have wide right-of-ways, you don't park on the swale. You just don't. But here, we do. Obviously, this person came from a place, in my opinion, that you just park on the right-of-way, but we have narrow roadways. So that's a hazard, and it's there 24, 36 hours. So finally, but I emailed the property manager, and the next day, I saw him parked on the driveway, so I know he's responsible. The point is, even when you got the best property manager or owner, they don't know who they're going to rent to for sure. And he, he's very careful who he rents to, and you just can't always catch it. So just just information that no matter how good somebody wants to self-enforce this, there's always going to be loopholes. So just wanted to pass that by. Let's see, almost finished. If you need, if you're going to have a committee on this, and you need somebody on it, I'd be glad to volunteer. Okay? And I think that's about it. You have any questions for me?
Okay. Thank you for your input.
We're looking for alternatives, I think. Alternative members, if you're willing to serve on...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Commissioners, we did have, we did have one more thing. I believe I had sent you the flyer for a seminar next Thursday?
All right, can I just ask?
Oh, sure, sure. I apologize.
A couple of things, maybe to the attorney is, in the dictionary, it says, "A hotel is a commercial establishment offering lodging to travelers." A commercial establishment is, is there some way we can get them out of residential neighborhoods? Because they're a business. With a property manager, that's a business.
Right. You got to be real careful when you're trying to apply... You've got to be real careful when you try and apply common sense to things that the Florida Legislature does and how they interpret things. So I don't disagree with you, what we all know to be a hotel or a motel, we know what it is.
But I mean, we don't have rules on the books about that?
Do we have anything now?
Well, they, again, define short-term, I know it doesn't make any sense, but they define short-term vacation rentals under transient public lodging establishments. And I apologize that I don't know how that relates to hotels in a commercial. They might be.
They don't consider that commercial?
They may be something completely different. And that's something I, I apologize that I haven't looked.
Can we look into that?
Absolutely, we can look into that.
Yeah, it would be something we'd have to spend some time.
I mean, my neighbor has a freestanding garage. I know I can't rent it from him and start a mechanic shop there. I just don't understand how you can turn the place next to me into a hotel. It is a commercial business in a residential neighborhood. What does that do to my property taxes?
Right.
Are these guys paying commercial real estate taxes on that? Are they paying the bed tax like hotels pay?
No.
And if not, how are they getting away with that?
They're, they're getting away with it because it's being allowed. It's, it's, it's something that's in flux right now. You have to give us some time to deal with this. And, and we can't, as much as we can try and deal with it, we also have to keep track of what the legislature is doing because they're trying to push us out of being able to regulate it.
In other words, the state of Florida doesn't think that we should have control over our neighborhoods?
The state of Florida doesn't think we should have control over much of anything anymore. They, they have, they have been on an attack of home rule for a while.
Please contact. Maybe we should control our taxes a little more and keep them at home.
Please contact your state legislatures because they do listen to the voices. They don't want to hear them, but they do listen.
Sure they do.
If you don't speak up.
And they make a lot of sense. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions if I might ask.
Michael?
Yeah? I have a question for you. Were those homes remodeled to accommodate these people?
Um, no, I don't believe so. Not remodeled, remodeled, but they were spiffed up, you know? I mean, they painted the place and cleaned up some stuff and fixed the pool and, you know? An older woman had lived there and passed away and they bought the place and cleaned it up and, you know? No, no heavy remodeling though, no.
See, only one of the silver, I know it's silver lining, but the, a little, if we have to look for a positive side, is, is a blighted, blighted building is not going to get the guests. So at least though in your neighborhood, the houses are kept in good order, the lawns mowed. I'm just trying to throw out a positive.
Well, that's, you know, most of Sebastian is that way pretty much anyhow. I just can't believe that, you know, it's conservative and a city and stuff and as, you know, high-end as Sebastian is, that we've got this problem, that it even came up. But let's do something about it. Thanks.
Mr. Rosen.
Quick question.
Yep.
You have suggested this council to call the police and issue a thing. Now, I emailed the property manager because I respect him and I know he'll do something. So I feel bad to get the police involved when I know he'll do it and I know you need a record of it. Is there a way I could make a record with the police without having them actually get involved?
The code enforcement is under the police department. You must make a complaint. Every complaint gets recorded. If you have a noise complaint, if you have a parking complaint. City of Sebastian has kind of a strange parking code. All vehicles must be parked in the driveway unless there is no room in the driveway. So anybody who, anybody, including your good neighbors, if they're parking out in the swale, they're not allowed to do that. But it takes a complaint because they also, our code enforcement doesn't have the time to drive around the city looking for.
Okay, so I'll have to again coach with them and I'll let the property manager know that I'm doing it because of this issue and just so he doesn't, I respect him.
I'll need to file a complaint.
Dory, I want to make comment. We have code enforcement for vacant lots and we don't have anything for residence.
But our hands are tied because of the state legislative. It's certainly not apathy of city staff or city.
Enforcement for vacant lot, weed goes up there, we get a notice, so.
I always thought you'd do your own enforcement. You run them off. You know, if they don't like the neighbor, they're not going to rent there anymore.
That's, that's what I.
That's how I deal with them.
That's how it is.
Loud dog, I don't know.
Well, I.
Hunt the horn at 2:00 in the morning.
All right, gentlemen.
Throw your own horn.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Dory, about a year ago, we addressed Wendy's, the rooftop equipment. Can you bring us up to date? What's in, what's your backlog? What projects are you working on?
Yes, so Mr. Simmons had brought this up. If you remember, it wasn't a variance, it was a waiver for the Wendy's because they had put some very big rooftop equipment on and our code requires that it must be screened so that it's hidden from view. And he had come and requested a waiver from this board. The waiver that you'd given him was that he, because he had came and, he had come and told you that he does own some, quite a few stores, three or four stores, and he was in the process of putting together some finances and which, determining which stores that he was going to remodel and update. You had, the determination at the waiver was that he had up until December of 31st, 2017, to determine if he was going to remodel the Sebastian store and if not, that that's when that rooftop equipment had to be hidden. So in the beginning, right after that waiver, Mr. Allen was his name, would give, call and give me a monthly update. I haven't quite decided. I'm still working on the Port St. Lucie store. Unfortunately, the last time we heard from him was in August. And I happened to visit the store shortly right before Mr. Simmons and it occurred to me that we hadn't followed up and there wasn't, he hadn't called me and we hadn't done anything on there. And gave him a call and he basically has said that he, they are not going to be remodeling the Sebastian store, but we have missed this December 31st deadline. Of course, this was a waiver and not necessarily a variance that had an order. He is going to get with me in the next week, he said next week, to send me what he is proposing to hide, to screen, to screen the equipment. It might not necessarily, he would throw in out painting, that he would like to paint the equipment to match, and if you can picture Wendy's, their, their kind of, their parapet roof is kind of a funky goldish color. And they thought maybe by, and I thought, well, we have allowed that on some, a couple of the other stores. Of course, they were metal, silver metal roofs and the equipment was already metal. I'm not sure if painting something gold is going to actually draw more attention to the heavy equipment on top of the store. So he's going to give, he said he would send in a couple of different options. I can certainly bring those to you if you would like to make the decision of what you feel would hide that. But he has, he has called and contacted and we are working with him. But he has missed the deadline of his December 31st and I did kind of let him know that we needed to then proceed with this on a timely manner, not let it go a few more months. But I can certainly bring his options before the board if you would like to see them.
I don't think painting is going to solve it. Just my opinion after seeing it.
So that, I think some of our other options have been some sort of, of course, as soon as you put up some sort of, I don't say picket fence or some sort of fencing or like that, then you do have to go into the wind load and the attachment and building permit, so. But if that is, you are feeling that the painting is not going to match, will certainly require him to, to put up the, more of a material screening.
I think definitely, you know, just the other day, I went past a newly remodeled one and it was beautiful. And I passed this one here with my son and he mentioned something about the big AC on the roof and I says, "Oh, it's going to get taken care of." And now I'm hearing different. So I think he needs to remodel this one. Sebastian's, you know, is, is, is.
Gee, it's been around forever now.
We have also been working.
We love that Wendy's. I mean, come on.
We've, I've also been working the last few weeks with the KFC Taco Bell. They are, you know, the franchises, they will update their stores, too. Now, they came in with a, an architectural design that really was much more urban than Old Fishing Village. So I've been trying to work with them. Of course, it was, I'm saying on the record, it was, it was red and white stripes. Let me just say it's, they started with that. So we have worked on trying to get it more of the earth tone and some more additional shutters and things like that. So we're working on the KFC also. And they're missing some landscaping on their site, so we'll get that back into compliance also.
Is there some new projects in the pipeline?
We have, the formal application supplemental of the RV Resort has come in and staff is reviewing that. It is out for jurisdictional review.
Cheesers Gap?
In Cheesers Gap.
Finally, it's coming.
The Dollar General is waiting for their building permits to be issued. So even though the building's been demolished, that, you'll be seeing some construction here probably in the next month with walls going up and site, some additional site grading.
A lot of hammers going around. And yeah, it's great.
Dory has been incredibly busy.
I was just going to say, I want to thank the plan staff because I don't know how you keep up with everything that's going on and all the different projects and the waivers we've given. And it's incredible and I want to compliment you two on doing an excellent job because it's.
I'm very lucky to have Lisa aboard.
It's overdue.
And we are back to a full staff.
And you're doing a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. And we're back to a full staff with our director. We have our zoning technician. We have a great environmental technician. Our planner is on, Kim Jones, and maybe next meeting we'll bring her so you can introduce her. So it's nice to have a.
And I like your comment, too, about the fact that you're taking those red and white stripes out of that design for that multi-fast food store.
Red, white. Does the city have a grant writer on staff?
Well, I have extensive experience writing grants and Margarita has gone to a class, correct? And we feel very confident that we can be successful together. In fact, we will be going after several in the very near future.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
I've registered for that thing next week, so.
If I, if I may, I have seen Mr. Minicozzi speak before at a Florida Redevelopment Association annual, annual event, whatever it's called. And he's very powerful, he's funny, he gets his message across. He really talks about what's happening in your urban core and how you can make it work for you. If you're able to make it, I encourage you to go. It's, it's, you know, it's always energetic to get somebody else's opinion, an outside opinion, and then try to bring it home to, to your own community. So I encourage you all. Thank you.
Okay.
You.
If there are no other matters this evening, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Yes.
I might call you.